It's four o'clock, so I have a little call to order. The Wednesday, March 26, 2025 City Council Workshop Meeting. You have before you the agenda. Any changes that anyone wishes to make to the agenda? If not, if someone wants to approve it? You need to approve it.
Madam Mayor, I move that we present the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. We've got it. All right, jump right into our presentations. And we have a special guest this evening. Anyone need to introduce him?
I don't know that he's been introduced, but the High Sheriff himself, Walt Griffin, is in the room. So I would like to recognize him and ask him to come and vote.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. You know, since I've been sheriff, we've seen some challenges in this area. And I value the partnership that we have, not only with the partners that I work with across the county, but within the city. The city of Hendersonville is the nucleus. And, you know, without your assistance, without us working together, we're not going to be able to achieve anything. I value the partnership that I have with the Hendersonville Police Department. Chief Mahan, we have discussed several things together and have a great working relationship. And it really, really shows, especially when we come of times of great distress. And you know, one of the worst experiences that I've ever had in my life, much less my career, was the morning I received a phone call that I had a deputy that was shot and ultimately killed. And the love that I received then, from all over, to include the city of Hendersonville, the council and the management, was tremendous. And what's tremendous is the way that love continued to carry on. You know, it was a tragic event. I don't think there's a person that had a heart anywhere in this region that that really didn't touch, because Ryan really was the best of the best. But I think it resonated, because we are so fortunate to live in a community here where order in our society is really valued. And those that go out and they put everything on the line to preserve that order, they're valued. And I really, really appreciate that. So, you know, I don't know that we will ever fully recover from losing Ryan. I just, I don't know that that's possible. I think there are things that you never get over. I think you learn to get past, but you never really get over. And this losing Ryan fits into that category. But the love that continues to be shown is tremendous. And I want to thank the council. I want to thank the management. And especially a good friend of mine, Councilwoman Jen Hensley, because she was the catalyst to bring about the naming of the bridge on Four Seasons for Ryan Hendrix. Well deserved, but it was her getting behind the scenes, approaching the city, getting the county on board, getting up with the state, and really bringing this to fruition. And that preserves his legacy. For those of us that know him, we'll never forget him. There's a lot of people that were unfortunate and never had a personal relationship with Ryan. And there'll be generations to come that they won't know Ryan, but every time they cross that bridge, they're going to understand that this man was somebody special. And I think that's important. I think it's important to all of us. And I want to thank you for being such a big part. And Jen, I want to thank you for the role that you had in actually making this happen. Because, you know, you were the one that brought up the idea to me. You were the one that kicked this off. And I'll forever be indebted to you, because that was the right thing to do. And I think it's tremendous. So we put together kind of a collage, and I wanted to present it to the council tonight. And it's the letters and pictures of the ceremony of the bridge dedication. So I wanted to really present that to the council and to you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if there's anything I can do for you, you've got my number. I'm just a call away.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Can you take a photo of you in our council chair?
Yes. Would love to.
You want us all to come around?
Yes.
Okay. Well, come on.
I told people the day that we had the dedication that I hoped that even if people didn't know Ryan, that they could Google his name or whatever when they would drive past on the highway. And I hope that they see the photo of Ryan dancing in that classroom. I hope that's the video that always pops up every single time.
That's the best video.
Because it embraces him.
That's right.
This is very great.
I would not mind at all.
Everybody ready? One, two, three. And one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Well deserved. Thank you. Next, we have a special events presentation. Various staff.
Yes, sir.
Jamie Spumstervis.
So thanks for following. It's a good afternoon, Council and Mayor. So we are just wanting to give you all an update on special events. We've done this usually every couple of years, and really want to make sure that all of council has a good understanding of the work and the costs that goes into special events, particularly with police and public works, but then also the value of them. So just as everyone's thinking about everything you're going to hear about for today, just take notes of, these are the things that we want you kind of to have in mind. You don't need to take notes, but you could. So just having an understanding of the hard costs of events, as well as their benefits, including the level of service for the city, the amount of work that goes into putting on and closing the street for events takes away some time and labor from other infrastructure or other maintenance that's needed from police or from public works, and as far as safety for police, considering if we need to have a cap on special events, thinking about alternative event locations, and ways we can spread the cost of events.
And as Jamie goes through this, and you'll hear from Public Works Department and also the Police Department, just, we wanted to bring this to you as we begin a new special event season, because there's more and more special events that people come to us for special events. And it does have a positive impact on our community, but also there are some impacts that may not be so positive. I mean, they're all positive, but they're just, it takes away from service levels, it adds cost to what we do, and also with what's going on in the world. And, you know, the law enforcement folks in the room truly appreciate this, and we'll talk about how much more time we're spending on providing a safe place for people to gather, particularly when they're in our streets. And we'll talk about it, but just want to make counsel where the, and the public doesn't, and our event organizers don't always understand that their costs may increase, our costs are increased in the impact of their events as it relates to the number of vendors and things like that. It's not because we want to do it, it's because we feel like we have to do it, so.
So we'll start off just a little bit of an overview of special events. These are all of the events that we have that are downtown. We do have some events that aren't downtown, but because there's so few of them, we just have them for the ones that are downtown, because those are such an impact. I've gotten grouped into a few different categories. So we have our multi-day major events, Garden Jubilee, Apple Festival Parade, Ardena Main. Those all close Main Street for more than one day. We've got our single-day larger events that close some, one way or another, they close all of Main Street, and that's our parades, Treat Street, Christmas Parade, Antique and Vintage Show. We have our multi-day repeating events, so Rhythm and Brews, and Music on Main, which is South Main Street. And just to point out, the Music on Main doesn't typically have to have a street closure, however the car shows do, and those occur concurrently with Music on Main. And then the Farmer's Market, which occurs 28 times, but that is self-contained, which is just our downtown staff that manage it and manage all the closure for it. Then we have our single-day, one or two-block events. That's our Christmas events, Earth Fest, Fiesta Hendersonville, the events that take place at Oka Waha Brewing, which this year they've requested three dates or have applied for, Jump Off Rock Half Marathon, and Turkey Truck. Just a little note on some of the value of events and why they're important. As the downtown manager and Main Street program, it's, events are an important thing for us, and they're an important thing for the community. So the marketing and promotion for downtown, the visibility of our community from some of these major events we have is not something to not think about, it's an important thing for folks to come in and see that we have such a great downtown. Supporting the downtown businesses, I'm sure most of y'all know, like, Apple Festival Weekend is what gets businesses through this time of year until it gets into the warmer period for a lot of them. And we definitely heard that from folks after Ardena Main was canceled back in September because of hurricane. They were real concerned with that, among other things. Sales tax revenue to the city, that's not something we can necessarily quantify because of the formula for sales tax, but we do know that businesses get increased sales during those weekends. Large events on Main Street, we do know that they increase parking revenue in the garage. The garage has been a great investment for events on Main Street, because before then there were 252 less spaces for people to park at. We do have a special event fee for the large events, but even on the events where we don't charge a special event fee, particularly if they're on Sunday or a holiday, when the rest of Main Street is free parking, the garage is paid parking. So we do have more revenue coming in on the garage on those days. There's also that passive economic impact to just overall improvement to the districts. And then the last, but definitely not least, is that community value and pride. That includes a lot of our holiday events, events that don't necessarily always, or all of the events, I think, increase that, I would say, but things like the parades and the family-oriented events. This is just a quick little bit of data from our Placer AI software we had last year. It was cellphone data, and so it kind of gives us a general 12-month period of when we have visitors to come. This is a 12-month period that does not include the hurricane, so it includes events that happened in the fall that we didn't have last fall. So as you can see on that, the days with closures in the summertime do make up a big portion of number of people who are coming to downtown. From May through December, 24% of the total visits to downtown were on event days, and only 16% of those days involved a street closure during that period. Some negative impacts of events. And negative may or may not be the right term, but you'll definitely hear some more of that, just ways we can figure out opportunities for improvement. The cost of city services that aren't reflected in the overall event fees, and I'll show you that here in a second. Safety risks, which you'll hear from Chief. Concerns with street closures impacting businesses on otherwise busy days. We do have businesses that don't like when there's events and street closures, and some of that depends on the type of event or the street closure. And then also, alluding to the next bullet point, on midday closures and their interruption of business, particularly for Halloween and the Christmas Parade, they close the street midday, which is a lot harder of an interruption for businesses than when it's closed in the morning. Then also that reduced level of city services, or reduced level of service for other city functions, taking public works employees away from things like street closure, or street paving, sidewalk repairs, stormwater. This is small, so you don't necessarily have to worry too much about that, but I just wanted to show what our event fees were. We updated this a year or two ago to have a full street closure price, because before that it was a per-vendor price for cost. So when we have the large events, Apple Festival, Garden Jubilee, those are $700 per day, and they're a multi-day event, so it's per day. When they're the smaller, one-day street closures, where typically we have Parks and Rec or another organization that helps with trash pickup and other maintenance for the event, those are $450 a day. Main Street closure with the avenues open, which currently right now is only Antique and Vintage Show, is $300 a day. One- or two-block closures, which make up the majority of the events, Rhythm and Brews, closures that are at the courthouse, any others that are just one or two blocks are 75 for one block, 150 for two blocks. And those are per occurrence. And then just closing the parking spaces at the courthouse, because we have several events that request that, $50 a day. These totals don't reflect additional costs for electricity, and that's charged per request from vendors. Also, there are costs for event organizers that aren't only just reflected in the event fees. Just so you have a full understanding for the event organizers, if they are paying less to the city, they are paying more in other areas, depending on what we charge them. Insurance, that cost is increasing for a lot of events everywhere, just the nature of insurance, and the cost of off-duty police officers. When we've switched over to extra-duty solutions for management of the off-duty software, that increased the rate that the organizers have to pay for police. And then, as the nature of keeping the events safe, some of the events have had increase in required.
Could you just give an example of the event fees as determined by the city?
That's what these are.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you were saying those were...
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. That was a confusing statement on my heart. So this, and I...
Were you going to mention what, I mean, the typical fee for an off-duty officer is, just to give reference? Is that, I mean, it's like minimum of $50?
It's, I believe it's 50, 55? 50 or...
I think it's 54. It's 45 for the officer, plus a fee for the city and a fee for the third-party management.
The organizers, I believe, pay 55 minimum...
Per hour.
Per hour. It's either 50 or 55.
54.
This, and I actually, I printed, I took some copies of that, that you got over there. See a little bit better. Thank you. This, that's just a copy of this slide. In this one, and you'll see some more about costs, this is just to get a general idea for a few different types of events, on what the event organizer is paying, and what the city is receiving, and then what the city is expending out as far as for labor, materials with public works, and then for the events that do not have police through off-duty payment. So, looking at the first one is the Apple Festival, and this also includes the King Apple Parade. So there, the Apple Festival does not pay off-duty through extra-duty solutions. Those costs are absorbed by the city, and so that's part of the reason, or a large reason why that cost is increased, but not the biggest. The event organizer pays about $15,000, but then the city's expenses are 112,612 for public works expenses, and about 19,254 for police expenses. So that gives a loss necessary, in these terms, from the city of about $116,000.
Why is there a difference, why is there a difference in how off-duty PDS pay for Apple Festival? With what city...
We have assumed that it's been going on 75, 76 years. It has always been treated as a city festival, even though it's operated by a nonprofit, that that was the city's contribution for the good of the city.
Okay. Thanks. And so then you can see, kind of mirroring that, Ardena Main, they pay, the event themselves pay for the off-duty, which is, I think I estimated that cost, so it, based off of the numbers of required officers, so it could be a little off, but in and around that amount of the $6,930. So they pay to the city $2,225, but their total fee, including the off-duty officers, is about $9,000. But a net for the city is, you know, not too bad, $725 loss for Ardena Main. Music on Main, because it occurs so frequently, they pay off-duty officers. However, their costs and labor to the city, as far as public works, bringing barricades out every Friday for eight weeks, is about $21,000. The events at Oka Waha Brewing, this is for just the one-time event, even though they had several, their cost as far as for public works was about $7,300. They paid the officers off-duty, so that cost was theirs, paid directly to officers. The Christmas Parade is the last one I wanted to bring up for today, because we don't really have a fee structure for the parades. And so that's considered just a city event, where the city absorbs those costs. And that's all three of our parades that we have, Fourth of July, Christmas, and the King Apple Parade, are also been that way, to where the, it's just a police-paid expense over time. And so that's about $11,000.
Can I say one thing about the off-duty? For the Apple Festival, since that's considered a city event, we are not paying the higher per hour cost, I mean, to off, extra-duty solutions. They get paid their normal salary, and sometimes it results in overtime, but if the Apple Festival were to hire them, it would be a lot more than that.
Yeah.
We're not paying those increased rates, I just thought everybody should be paying.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, they're, I don't even know what to tell you as far as what they would be paying for extra-duty right now. It would be, it would be a lot more than $90,000. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you. Talk about, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Council. I want to just talk about some of the concerns that keep us awake at night. And so, no matter which event that we have, when we have street closures, we spend, and it's probably not captured in any of Jamie's stuff, we spend probably eight-man hours, roughly, planning for these events. And so, certainly different threats that change throughout time that are, become more of a concern for us, but the number one, you know, talking with the FBI, talking with other law enforcement leaders around the country, the vehicle ramming attacks is the number-one threat for large-scale public outdoor events now. And so, these aren't just in Nice, France, France, and other places that you heard. In fact, the picture on the bottom left of your screen is Waukesha, Wisconsin's Christmas Parade. And that was not a terrorist incident, it was just a domestic violence situation where the gentleman driving that car who killed several people and injured several more, you can see how close he is to those two, that young girl and that guy on the other side of the vehicle. That was just a random incident, and, you know, there's a lot of lessons learned from that event, but those things happen everywhere. And one of our, you know, primary concerns, especially with the way downtown is and how crowded that road gets, you know, a vehicle that breached our perimeter would obviously cause a lot of concern. Active shooter attacks, of course, we've seen many stories of those in the last, you know, couple decades, and it's not so much, you know, the well-trained person with, you know, automatic rifles and all the things that everybody thinks of, it's one person with one handgun in the middle of the crowd, angry at someone else, or a fight that breaks out would cause sheer pandemonium for us. And then, of course, now we're seeing, as you saw in Nevada here, recently Las Vegas, you know, vehicle or bombing attacks are probably not as great of a concern for us, but still something that we worry about. And for me and for the Police Department, you know, we rest easy at the end of an event when nothing happened. And I think that the reason why we've been successful is because we plan so much for our events and make sure that we put everything in place to minimize the risk to the city of these happening. Because, as you can imagine, over my 30-year career, I've seen things go bad at special events, I've seen, you know, a little kiddie train turn over and injure a bunch of kids, you know, not, you know, God just turned too fast, right? But we've seen people crossing railroad tracks, you know, in a parade, and the train goes through, and, you know. And so I want to make sure that none of that stuff happens. That's why I have staff, Lieutenant Cantwell, you know, is in charge of our, planning for our special events now, and, you know, we go through these things over and over again and with a fine tooth comb and make sure that we have everything in place. And so, we have increased what we are, our hardening of our targets here. And so, you know, one thing that we've done is we've really increased police presence, you know, particularly on Apple Festival, we have folks that are working all during the day, right, in two different shifts. We've assigned people per blocks, you know, the corralling of six officers that just, you know, kind of shoot the breeze is, you know, we make sure our supervisors don't, we don't allow that, right? We spread folks out so there's a presence around there. We are, we've been using water barricades here in the city for a long time. We will show you, there's a picture of what we have now, some anti-vehicle barricades, they're metal barricades designed to stop vehicles. We purchased some right after Helene, and we have been using them since the Halloween event last year. And so, they're expensive, so we don't have, you know, to do all of Main Street, to block all the avenues, both ends of Main Street is about $800,000, and we bought those devices, which is, of course, a lot of money. It would take a considerable amount of time to set all of that, that whole, you know, perimeter up with these vehicles, with these devices, but we have them for the ends of Main Street where we feel is the greatest threat, where a vehicle could get some speed, right? So we're using those now. We are looking at cameras for downtown. You know, one of the things I learned years ago, I think it was 2017 or something, when the Boston bombing happened, they were pretty quickly able to close that case because they had video, right? It was an attack that no one saw coming, but they had video, they were able to identify the suspects and, you know, and get that case wrapped up within, you know, as we all watched, I mean, I'm sure we're all glued to the TV watching the manhunt. But right now, we are, we don't have a very good way of monitoring large crowds through video surveillance to be able to capture that stuff, to use it if we had to do criminal prosecution or identify suspects. We just don't have that. We are in the process of planning for that within the city. But again, all that stuff comes with a cost, right? And so, there's a balance on what we want our presence to look like, you know, and how protected we want to be as a city. But again, we're, like I mentioned before, we're doing a lot of planning ahead of time. We have all of our, all of our police officers go through Incident Command System Training, all of our supervisors go through advanced levels of that. We've also started implementing Emergency Operations Center, as all of y'all were aware, you know, during Helene, you saw how that worked, and we're doing that now in a more formal, structured way during our larger events, certainly with Apple Festival. We used to have the police command post. We no longer have it because it got flooded in Helene, but we had our command post there on the corner of Third and North Main, and we operated everything out of there. But, you know, as we've looked at these things, that's not the place to have your command post, right? Because if something happens, it's right caught, it's caught right up in the middle of all that, so we've moved that away from there. I think this year, we'll probably, we'll do it here in City Hall, I don't know... Uh, I think this year, we'll probably, we'll do it here in City Hall, I don't know if City Ops will be functional by then. But we would, we have an off-site Emergency Operations Center where we're staffing that, we put command-level people, you know, decision-makers from different departments in the, in that room. So we're prepared if, if an event happens, right? Because we can only mitigate the risk, but we can't prevent them completely. But, you know, our goal is to make sure that the city of Hendersonville is never, uh, on the map for anything other than, you know, a map. But we don't ever want to be the place where, where one of these things happen, and, you know, we're not only worried about a terrorist incident or a bad actor, but uh, we're worried about, you know, someone who has a medical crisis while they're driving a vehicle, right? Or people just following the GPS on their phone, and it says, "Turn right on North Main Street." Right, all of those things are a risk now, and I've seen, you know, I've seen all those things happen. And so we, we have to plan for, you know, not even the bad actor, just the person that's not paying attention and uh, and just drives the wrong way, because once a vehicle gets into a crowd, you know, it's, a lot of, a lot of bad things can happen. So we're working very hard to, to make sure that our events are safe. And again, I, when we go home at the end, you know, we, we high-five each other after an event back at the Police Department when it was successful, and nothing happened. So, um, that is, I think that's all that I, oh, well, so yeah. So here's what we, this picture is actually, uh, Treat Street, twenty-twenty-four on Main Street. You see those yellow barricades? We actually, uh, now we have flashing lights on them, you can kind of see one on the far right of that picture. Just again, trying to make it uber-visible. And those, those barricades, as we've learned, because you can see how close the crowd is to those barricades now. Now we've learned, uh, from talking to the manufacturer, that we need to, there's a standoff distance that they recommend. So if a vehicle were going at thirty-five miles an hour intent on breaching that, that barrier, those, those anti-vehicle barriers would stop that vehicle, but not immediately, right? There is a, you know, there's a process, you know, there's physics involved in that, but, you know, we try to keep a a stand-up distance of thirty feet or, or fifty feet or something beyond that where people aren't corralling around, because, you know, someone would still likely get injured if a vehicle was, was moving at that speed. So we, but it's far better than what we've had before. Uh, they are, we can, we can move them in and out of the way, you know, they have wheels on them, and we have to have a device to, to move them, but we can move them if we need to. Currently, right now, all we've been using is either a large vehicle, you know, which is very effective, but kind of unsightly. So again, it's what, what the Council of the City is willing to accept as part of our service delivery in, in these events. We use the water barricades, I think everybody's seen those larger water barricades, and those are effective due to weight. I think they're, I don't know, they're either four hundred pounds wind field, I think, maybe four or eight hundred. One of those two numbers sticks in my mind, I forget what, it's eight, it's, uh, eight pounds a gallon, I, I think it's, you know, dude, they're heavy. And we link them together to add, uh, you know, more resistance for a vehicle that would try to go through those. Uh, and so, again, I think the, the vehicle, anti-vehicle barricades are, they are a better protection for our attendees. Uh, but they cost more, you know, it, it takes, you know, those things are only about a foot and a half wide individually, they're all linked together there. And so you can see, I mean, there's a dozen of, of them or so right there, just to block, I think that's Sixth and Main, that, that, um, picture is taken right there. So again, we've got a, it comes with a great big trailer to, to pull these things on, which requires a uh, you know, a subs, you know, I don't know if it needs a substantial vehicle, but it's got to have a, you know, a vehicle with some towing capabilities on it. And so, um, we're, we're learning how to use it, we've all been training on how to put these things up so we can minimize the time. Uh, but I do think that that is a, it's a, it's a better approach, but it is, it costs significantly more than what our current water fair, waterfield barricades cost, so. Uh, I think, Tom, this is, uh, all you now. Any questions y'all have for me?
Thank you, Chief. Uh, really didn't have much to say about the bollards, other than, you know, we've been exploring different options, uh, over the years. Um, we haven't really select one to go with so far, so we're kind of still in that process, fi- figuring out exactly what, what we want and, or what we need and where we want to put them, but the, you know, they're to get a, a crash-rated bollard that's, that'll, that'll stop a car at fifty miles an hour. You know, some of the prices we were seeing early on were twenty-two thousand dollars for each bollard, you know, and you're going to need. Uh, the one I was looking at was, uh, I don't know, I think they had to be thirty-nine inches apart, so you're looking at six or seven of them to do twenty-four feet of asphalt. Um, plus all the concrete work and rebar, it's got to go in the foundation to, to help support those things when something hits them. Um, just to give you an idea, but that's really all I wanted to say about those.
Well, Tom.
Yep.
Will you get into whether we do it now or then, what, as it relates to the time and the water and everything, as it relates to setting up the barrier, barricades, is that in this part of the presentation, I mean, I think?
I think we've gotten that information in the slides, or did we take that out?
Well, we'll, we'll go, the, the, the point, the reason we wanted to show you the different barricade types, because there is an impact on, on on time and effort and the, the, the smaller, we got the, we got the vehicle barricades, because with the idea that we were hoping that it would cut down on the time and the manpower, because you'll see here the manpower that is pulled away from other things that Public Works does to set up the barricades and things.
Yeah.
But we have, you know, since found for safety reasons, and I mean, the league of municipalities had their risk management, and the first thing they let off with was street closures and special events. And they showed the yellow barricades just like we had. But now realizing we need the thirty, at least a thirty-foot
To a set-off.
Set-off zone with another set of barricades, so our, for the protect, the protection, as we go through here, you'll see as we talk about the time it takes Republic Works and Street Department to set up, um, it's a significant amount of time, so I just put that out there. And the bollards, we bring up the bollards, because that may be an option as we go forward in the future, that might, uh, might allow us to locate events at a specific location where the bollards are permanent, or, or there, that may, um, take, require less time from Public Works. So I'll just stop there and let Tom go through his presentation.
Right, and, and, and I don't remember exactly, but we, we had a slide in, in here, and we took it out. But I, if I remember right, Jamie, you, you may be able to help me, but I think it was ten and a half hours to
Instead of each one?
To, to, to deploy the water barriers, uh, come back, fill them up, and then come back later on and remove them, and I think that was ten guys, if I'm not mistaken, ten hours.
I can pull that up, I see.
To give you a, a rough idea, and that, and that, and I believe that was for the full closure, uh, for Main Street.
Yeah, and so, so now with these water barricades, plus the new ones, we don't fully have a, a timeframe of the amount of time and labor understanding for the setting up the new barricades. We've got a little bit of an understanding of it, but we've only really done it for, what, two events at this point, so we don't fully have a grasp on that yet.
Yeah, exactly. Um, but really, the, the, the key points I wanted to point out here were, um, you know, majority of the events occur on Fridays and Saturdays. Um, and so, um, that really impacts our staff's quality of life when they have to come back in and work, you know, a lot of their time on the weekends. Uh, the other thing I want to point out was that we spent, Public Works spends, spent three thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight hours last year just on special events, and that's the equivalent of about two, two, two-point-two full-time employees for the year. Um, the bulk of that work fell on the Street Department, uh, about twenty-one percent, or roughly two thousand hours, a little over two thousand hours. Um, which is valuable time taken away from, from maintaining your infrastructure, your roads, your sidewalks, the stormwater systems, all the stuff that the Street Department should be working on. Um, that time was taken away from them to, to do other things.
Guess what they can't do during that twenty-one point eight percent?
Fix the damn streets.
We can't fix the damn streets. Thank you, John.
Um, the point of this slide is just to show that, you know, as, as, as the season ramps up, as the temperature skips, temperature warms up for the season in April and May, you can see that, that special events ramp up. And our hours, or Public Works' hours, or everybody's hours, uh, dedicated special event ramps up as well. And that also coincides with our time, uh, of, of pouring concrete, making repairs, fixing asphalt. Uh, because that, the warmer season is really ideal to, to take care of, of those things as well. Um, now, like, like Chief Matt End and, and John and, and Jamie, you know, the, with the, uh, modular barriers, uh, we are working with the Fire Department and, and the Police Department to, to get a good plan together um, on how to deploy those and then pick them back up. It does require, uh, a large trailer, a large truck, um, uh, to move that thing around, uh, but it is going to take time above and beyond what, what you shown, what you saw on the last slide. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out is, and Jamie and I, uh, talked about this briefly, um, via chat. But, uh, we are hiring some downtown staff. Uh, we've got two people hired right now, we're trying to hire a third, we've got a fourth one that we hope to hire in July or after July, or after July one. Uh, there's a possibility that those folks can help out with special events, we, we hope they can. Um, but until we get into taking over that full maintenance contract from, from, uh, Bruce and Scott, uh, to take over all the landscaping downtown, we just don't know how much time's going to be required to, to do that, and you know, it's my opinion that it, it's not a safe assumption to, to just assume that they'll be able to, to do both. So I would feel more comfortable if we just let those folks, you know, once they get them on board, once we take over that contract, that we let them do that work, and then kind of maybe ease them into, to helping out on some of this stuff. Um, but I say all that just to emphasize that, um, you know, it does take a lot of time to, um, to do this work, as you saw, uh, and without a change, there, there are time taken away from, from working on your in- infrastructure, uh, and, and that stuff's, it's not going to get fixed on its own. You know, it's being negatively impacted by that time away. So, do you want me to talk about anything else, cover anything else?
No, I, I think that the, the, the point of the message is, we've heard Council, uh, one reason we're going to make this presentation, and Thompson very upfront with us, we've heard Council's concern about infrastructure and our somewhat, um, interbille, what impacts us not being able to get everything done that we need to get done. And so we started doing workload analysis, um, we've done a lot of workload analysis, we're still doing a lot, but what we're seeing is in addition to typical, um, you know, Tommy, help me, I, I think I'll get these numbers, you know, with of any given employee with vacation, sick leave, things like that, they're here eighty-four percent of the time. But as it relates to the Street Department, as it relates particularly during the summer months, the availability of our Street Department really, because of this, drops down to well, it's eighty-four percent, and then because of some other factors, it may drop another ten, but it's it, because of special events, it may drop our availability of the Street Department, that they may be available any given year about fifty percent of the time. I won't go
Fifty-one percent of the time, that's right.
Fifty-one percent of the time, I mean, we don't want to be gloom and doom, special events have a place in our community, and it's, it's part of our culture, so we not trying to say do away with it, but we want you to know what some of the impacts are of special events, and we have some other thoughts and kind of recommendations that, or requests of Council going forward, um, just for you to consider, so.
Yeah, absolutely, we, just to be clear, we're, we're not opposed to special events, we, we like them as much as anybody else, it's just it, it takes a, like John said, it takes a lot of time to, uh, to do what we do, and, uh, we enjoy it, but, uh, yes, ma'am.
Does that often look like overtime or flexing hours or a combination or?
So it's a combination, I mean, you know, really, th- they can, they come in on the weekends and work, and they, that can go to overtime, which they can take off later, uh, or they can take it off the next week, but that rarely happens. A lot of, you see the benefit of, of taking that time and taking it off later, yeah.
Thank you.
If, if I could say also just, uh, we didn't say it earlier, but for the Police Department, we use no on-duty staff at any special event, so they're either they're getting paid by the event organizer on their day off, or they're paid by the city on their day off. But at Apple Festival, every officer up there is working their day off for that event. And so, and like in Apple Festival's case, everybody, everybody has to work two shifts during, during the weekend, because it's such a, a long weekend. So that, and that's why ours, our overtime increases because of, we, you know, I don't put any on-duty personnel out on the special events, so.
Yeah, just to wrap up, and I did pull out that number that Tom was mentioning, so the total cost for Public Works to place and fill barricades, and I don't know if this is the new numbers or numbers from a couple years ago, but regardless, to place and fill was, uh, just under four thousand dollars. So for, for the Public Works to be out and set up the water barricades for the Apple Festival, just to set them up, is, as far as labor costs is, is thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Does that say the hours, was it ten?
Um, ten employees, uh, for two and a half hours to set them out.
Two and a half hours?
Yeah, and then four, actually, four hours to fill, including filling.
Yeah, and then, and then to pick them back up, it was
Yeah, I don't think it had pick them back up on that.
Okay, anyway.
So just another thought on the cost. Um, so then overall, this is just the, uh, we kind of tried to figure out our total, um, costs essentially on events. Um, the Public Works say that they, um, they have a lot of exact numbers, because Public Works has everything through a work order system, and, or as exact as they probably could be. Um, and so the total cost for events as far as labor is about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, equipment fifty-four thousand, materials three thousand. Uh, police, this is, um, the cost specifically for the events that are the city, um, policing events, uh, so that's just Apple Festival and Parade, July Fourth Parade, and Christmas Parade. So those are the events like Chief was just, uh, talking about that are not the, not on-duty, but they're ones that the city pays for that overtime or the, the cost of labor.
Can you remind me again why those are the ones specifically that the city pays for?
Tradition, just, um, you know, c- again, they have been, other than they have been thought of as community-wide, community-benefit events, it is just, those are the ones that we have traditionally provided as a city, as city events. So, I mean, just, we've absorbed that cost, um, to do that, um, just, it's been historically that way.
Can we either round up or round down on the Apple Festival parade hours?
They did have them separate, and I added them together, that was probably, uh, my bad. Um, and I, I, I haven't mentioned in this, uh, much about what, you know, our downtown staff and, and department does, but all of our events are done through the Friends of Downtown, and so that's through the nonprofit to where, um, we're Carnivally, Rhythm and Brews, Treat Street, Christmas Events, other than the parade, because we don't do that. Um, those are paid through the extra duty like all the other event organizers. Uh, and then we haven't talked much about, but, um, just the amount of hours that we put into every month and every year of handling event applications and reviewing event applications and talking to event organizers and, um, prepping from police, pre- preparing the, um, the IAP, which is called Incident Action Plan. Um, Public Works getting the preparation on, on their side as far as scheduling, and then our, our office, um, taking all the applications and putting together the agendas and all of that. Um, that's not hours actually planning the events, it's just working on the event applications.
I have a question. Should this total be two twenty-nine? Not two ninety-nine?
At, yep.
Doesn't include the, that administration hours.
Yeah, I might have, um, done my wrong math on that.
And, and my other question, I mean, it's still a ridiculous amount of money. Um, my other question is, does this come out of Main Street's budget, or does it?
The, no, the, the work that comes out of Main Street and the municipal service districts include a lot of replacement of, uh, water barricades and materials, some of that comes out of Main Street, but the labor itself, there, there is a split as far as salaries go for, um, Public Works, I don't think any police come out of that. Uh, but there is a small portion of, of split, uh, from Public Works, but I don't know that that really. but I don't know that that really puts that much of a dent into it.
Most of this is, is, is on the, is on the general fund.
Yeah.
Most of this cost.
So then to kind of come back around to what we were, um, talking about at the beginning, um, just that discussion, if we want to consider any type of cap on special events and how that process would be. Um, thinking about alternative event locations, I'm all for a park. We've talked about that for a while, uh, but that's a whole different experience of costs. May, may not really save much. I'm not really sure. Uh, spreading the cost on events as far as, um, event fees to, to support it, but also if we want to still have events, there's a certain level where the events won't be able to occur if it's too expensive for them to put them on. And then, um, those impacts if we do nothing, um, as far as for the, the public works and maintenance level of services, that, um, that time amount that Tom was alluding to.
And so, really, we just want to bring this to your attention. We, we, as a staff, at the very least, would, would like to explore putting a cap on special events because they continue to increase. But we also know special events are part of our culture. I mean, they, they are in our community. We just wanted to counsel them that they have an actual cost and a level of ser- service cost to, to how we do things. We're not baying or saying we shouldn't do special events, but we felt like it was important, um, to make you aware of how the events and the impacts going forward of the event organizers. Um, they are having to pay more. Um, they're, we're, we're requiring them to have more off-duty law enforcement. We think that's the right thing to do. Um, we are requiring them to space, you know, we're going to have to have, the space that they use will be impacted by the barriers and the setbacks and those kind of things. Um, and it's, it's things that we deal with on a regular basis, but you get complaints about it. We also know that our downtown businesses don't like the fact, especially, especially for the, the midday closures on the parade. They hate them. You know, it depends on who you talk to. Depends on who you talk to, they're like, well, just, just start towing people. Well, I mean, our law enforcement will tell you, if you just start towing people, we're going to have a hundred people sitting in here wanting to know why we tow their vehicles without giving them warnings. And so we start closing the street earlier in the day to get people to remove their vehicles, so we're just not towing them. Um, that has a call, but if, if this is council policy time, I mean, this is your, ha- you hear a lot, we talk about a lot. Um, we wanted you to be aware of everything that we go through or goes into putting on special events. Not that you didn't know, but felt like putting in a nice presentation and package would help you understand as people talk to you and allow you to give us guidance, what's our pain threshold? What do we, is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in any given year, that's acceptable? It's acceptable with the reduction in service levels, um, associated. But we would say at the very least, let's put a cap maybe, um, and maybe look for alternative locations. Does every car show have to be in the middle of the street? Could it, I mean, but that's not going to be popular with the car show folks. They like to be in the street versus in a parking lot. Um, and spreading the cost, also do we raise the cost to the point that we start covering our expenses, but it may not make it doable for the event organizer to make it worth their time and their effort as it relates to raising money? Jamie, what'd I miss?
I, I'd just add as far as things like the car show or events that are currently, currently the special event policy is that, um, events that are, have already been, because the council basically approves new events and if there are any significant changes to events. And then the event policy is if there are no significant changes, they don't have to go towards council, which that's something that we can, i- if we're going to be, uh, be putting a cap on it, we'd need to update that policy to make sure that we're figuring out that way to evaluate them.
At this point, open for guidance now or later, if you want to think about it. Um, prob- it, we're heading into special events, so no ma- we don't feel like there'd be a major changes for this season because it kicks off very soon. Um, and a lot of folks have things planned and we're in the process of planning, so, but we want to make council aware of the good, bad and ugly of special events.
Okay. Any questions or comments at this point? All right, thank you. There's just something to think about. Something else to think about. All right, uh, from fun events to-
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I'll be quick tonight. Um, we're just sprinkling in some general budget updates throughout some of the workshops. I consider the last one, one of those as well. Uh, so as you know, we have been, uh, bidding our health insurance plan and we have received those bids. Uh, and I'm just want to provide you with some information tonight on that. So really tonight, I just want to present this information to you and prepare you for potential action that we would take at the April regular agenda. So, uh, just a quick, quick history, um, historical plan changes. So, uh, we go over this regularly in the budget. You're probably used to seeing the, uh, presentation. Okay, that's not working. Uh, the plan presentation on the top, uh, shows kind of our cost per city cost and per employee over the past five fiscal years, and you can see the percent change in our plan. So, uh, in FY twenty-two, we had a three percent decrease. In FY twenty-three, we had a twelve percent decrease. FY twenty-four, we had no change. And then in FY twenty-five, our current budget year, we had a six percent increase in our medical insurance premiums. Uh, however, uh, what our broker has been telling us, uh, for the past few years is we've been getting very sweetheart deals from our previous, uh, medical provider. Uh, so in FY twenty-one, we ran at about fifty-six percent loss ratio, which is good. Twenty-two, we were great, sixty-two percent, and things started to trend up in FY twenty-three. Uh, if you'll notice, we didn't get any adjustment to increase our plan at that ninety-eight and a half percent. Typically, the carrier's looking to be less than eighty-five percent, so we really should have trended, uh, eight percent or so, a ten percent plan increase. We had to zero. Uh, and then in FY twenty-four, our loss ratio was a hundred and twenty-one percent of our payments and our current trend is a hundred and forty-three percent. So you can see a, a very strong growth in our, uh, plan claims. Those have doubled in the past two years. Uh, there were, to be frank, underwriting issues, uh, with our previous plan provider. Uh, and so it put us in a position where we are today.
Can you be more specific?
Uh, they weren't-
They didn't give us high enough-
They didn't give us great increases to pay for our claims. So we were underpaying. The pool was paying to cover, uh, our losses. And so they underwrite that every year and determine what we have to pay in each year. And, yeah, they were just missing on what we were going to spend each year.
And we weren't the only ones. Um, our two closest peers, um, we're seeing the same numbers as ours. So we, this is, we are not the outlier here, which we are very consistent. We're probably a little higher, but pretty consistent with our two closest peers that were members of the municipal insurance trust.
And so we were seeing this, uh, coming, and so we, uh, proactively started bidding the plan in January. Our medical insurance provider actually closed the pool in February, and so luckily we were ahead of that trend. Uh, and we actually have our bids in hand today, and so I'm going to present those here. And this is what we'll be considering, ideally for the April agenda item, and we'll have time to discuss this throughout the week as well.
Are you independently quote these plans or are you using a broker?
We utilize a broker.
Uh huh.
It's Mark III, uh, benefits.
Okay. And we use the same broker every year?
We do.
Is that broker, um, like specified by the League of Municipalities? Is that who they recommend?
No, that's-
Or how do we choose them?
We went out and explored different brokers and we decided on Mark III based on some of what our peers were using. Henderson County also uses Mark III and just reputation and knowledge, uh, in the field. And I have his presentations from the past five years and he keeps saying in his presentations, they're missing the mark on where your trend is and you're getting good deals. And so it finally came true, um, unfortunately. Uh, so, uh, to summarize, uh, we had five bid responses. Uh, I have those in a greater detail and on your, uh, dais there. Uh, but we had Aetna, Cigna, United Health and two Blue Cross options. One is a level funded, fully insured plan. One is a self-funded pooled option. And so, uh, they range from forty-three percent to fourteen percent. Uh, Aetna was the highest at a forty-three percent increase. Uh, to be frank, our budget can't handle that level of an increase. Uh, Cigna, from an opinion standpoint, lowballed us at fourteen percent. We would highly expect that the next year that will be hitting us again, or we'll be bidding the plan again. Uh, we are looking for stability for our employees and staff, uh, and our medical insurance providers. So we do not want to be, uh, jumping up and down with insurance changes every year. Uh, and then the other three all hit very, very close, uh, thirty-three point one, thirty-three point three and thirty-three point nine percent, uh, proposed increases to our rates. Uh, so we've built in a thirty-four percent increase in our budget right now. Uh, that is tremendously impacting all of the funds, uh, but we are really targeting in on the Blue Cross options. We think those are probably the two best proposals we have. One of them is a self-funded pool. We have some preference for that self-funded pooling option. We believe there is advantage to that, which we can talk more about. But in all, that is what I wanted to cover today. I didn't want to take too much time. I know we have another important presentation and this was locked on, so we make sure we can get this in front of you before having, uh, decision and discussion point at your April regular meeting.
So just a little more, little more detail, um, as it relates to, you know, the MIT pool, which we were a member of, had over three hundred members. That pool will cease to exist, um, July first. Us and two of our peers, um, are the largest members. Um, we are in constant contact with those two members. Um, and we are evaluating, um, a lot of these similar proposals, um, going forward. Um, and we, you know, trying to negotiate as a, as a kind of a, the three amigos, I guess, will be the best way to say it, and to, to get value from the number of life members we have. But we are closing in. We're waiting on a couple more checks here and there, but we're, we're zeroing in on the Blue Cross CPAC, the far right on the screen there, um, option. Because we feel like, uh, while it's got that point eight percent or, you know, and point six percent more than the other two, looking at the long-term viability of the program and planning, we think it gives us the greatest ability over multiple years, um, based on our understanding of the pool, um, and, um, cost leveling and covering of the fixed costs that are built into that particular. We're happy to have our broker, um, speak to the council if you would like to. Um, but that is what we're kind of circling into, to bring as a recommendation, um, at your next week's meeting, so.
One other item I'd just add between the CPAC and IHA, so the level funded and self-funded Blue Cross options, is the, the self-funded option matched more of our current plan design from a dependent coverage level? And the IHA actually adjusted that from a risk perspective. So if we went with IHA, that would actually have a larger take-home impact on our staff than the CPAC model. And then last, I just wanted to highlight for you all, we have a comparison of our neighbors' plans and I would just highlight to really focus in on the deductibles, max out of pockets and the co-pays. Um, we're doing really well compared to our peers. We asked if there was plan design options we could look at to increase deductibles or co-pays to buy down the percentage increase. Um, however, they got that back to me this morning. We're looking at, you know, pretty painful plan design changes for staff that result in only about a two to three percent savings on the overall. So, uh, that will be, you know, you could consider that, uh, from a budgetary perspective in April, but, uh, right now it's not looking like it would save us too much money from, and I think we would , uh, damage ourselves from recruitment and retention standpoint by making those plan design changes. So staff is here to answer any other questions, but we'd be happy to talk more in April.
If council would like to speak with our broker, to ask them questions, we can arrange that to happen too. So we just got to make a decision fairly quickly to, to get underwriting done and things in process, so. So luckily, we started this in January before this, but happy to, to arrange a phone call or a Zoom meeting or all or a few of you want to do that, that'll be fine too, so.
Did you?
I did. Um, when you said a pretty painful changes to the insurance policies, like were those just out-of-pocket type changes or deductible changes?
Deductible and co-pays are the main ones. So deductible is going to fifteen and three on the base PPO plan.
Okay.
And then co-pays going to fifty and seventy.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Specialist.
Okay. I would be curious about just like prescription drug tiers, if there's any flexibility on that? And then with the out-of-pocket maximums for individuals and families?
I'll make that ask.
Those are smaller impacts and, I mean, if it saved two percent, I don't even know if it would, but it would be worth looking into.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Uh, DFI, affordable housing.
Frank, bring us some joy. We've, we've, we've been gloomy doom, we've been gloomy doom for the council.
I'll try, I'll try.
They give him bad names.
Hopefully some fire.
Doesn't matter. Look at Grandma's head. See?
Madam Mayor and Council, it's great to be in front of you all again. Um, Frank Baraka from Development Finance Initiative. Um, we're here today to, uh, present you all our final recommendations for our Affordable Housing and Opportunities Site ID scope. I'll talk a little bit more in a, in a second. Just to remind you all, we're a program of school government, which by now you all are very familiar with and our, our role of supporting local governments in their missions across the state. Our goal at DFI is to help you all pursue public-private partnerships, in this case for affordable housing. So the ultimate goal of this work is to help you all identify a, a partner for developing new units of affordable housing within, within the city. Our scope with you all kicked off in, in August, um, and the, the goal of this, the scope was to identify sites across the city that could lead to a feasible, affordable housing project. So when I was up here in December, we really presented the, the first half of our work, which was going through a robust housing needs assessment, um, talking about some of the, the conversations that we, that we had with stakeholders and what were the housing challenges that, that they, that they were seeing. Using all of that information to inform the second part of our work, um, which was to identify sites that would meet the, the housing needs of, of the city and assessing the, uh, the development potential of, of those sites. So, uh, we identified up to four, four sites, uh, which I'll go through, um, in this presentation. And, yeah, and, and the, the kind of rehash what the priorities were for, for this, for this work. So what those housing needs assessments, what those conversations were ultimately leading to was to set, what, what are those priorities for identifying sites? So some of the themes that we heard were sites that could support density. So really embarking on this project or on this initiative for projects that could maximize the, the impact of number of units that we're seeing, prioritizing city-owned land when we're looking for, for opportunity sites, sites that are walkable to amenities, and finally, sites that were, that are competitive for important funding sources that go into these, these types of projects. Um, we identified four sites across the city. Um, only one was city-owned and I'll spend the bulk of this presentation talking about that opportunity. Um, but three of the sites overall were, were multi-family and we have one site for, as a single-family affordable homeownership opportunity as well. So just to rehash, you know, what, what goes into identifying sites that are suitable for, for multi-family projects. One of the things that I talked about at the beginning was, um, really identifying sites that are competitive for funding sources for affordable housing projects. In this case, for, uh, affordable rental properties, what we were looking for were projects that were competitive for a program called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, which you all are by, by now familiar with. Lytech projects, just to, you know, revisit this, this, some of these requirements. These projects are developed and managed by, by a private developer, so these funds aren't available to local governments themselves, but a, a, a private- but a, a, a private partner could go and pursue these, these tax credits. These projects have very strict um, site requirements. So to be competitive for these tax credits, you have to be within a mile and a half of some of those amenities that we've been talking about, like grocery stores, pharmacies, and, and schools. Similarly, they have to be located far enough away from disamenities like industrial sites, flood zones, or, or railroads. And then there are some, some site constraints as well. So um, the LITech program requires at least one point seven five onsite parking spaces per unit. So that will go into kind of what, what the development potential is using this, um, using this funding source. Just to give you a sense of how these projects are put together and some of the common um, other, other funding sources that developers rely on, so as you see, the bank loan at the bottom um, provides, you know, a, a portion of that project as, as it does for most uh, real estate development projects. But uh, in orange there, you'll see how much tax credit equity is really brought to the project. So the bulk of the project in these project, uh, for the, these types of developments tend to be funded by, by tax credits. There are two other smaller sources that go into um, tax credit projects. One is the Rental Production Program, an RPP loan. This is a funding source provided by uh, the State Housing Finance Agency and they will award these funds for projects that, that meet certain affordability requirements. So projects that provide deeper affordable units are competitive for, for this funding source. And then finally, uh, developers will tend to defer a portion of their fee and put that into the project itself. So even with all those funding sources though, um, many of these projects, because of where construction costs are, where interest rates are, where land prices are, um, tend to also still have a financial gap. And so I'm gonna talk about some of the development scenarios um, for, for these, for these sites. And our goal here is to show you what a minimum feasible development is. So what is the, of, project that could fit on the site that would minimize that, that financial gap? So I'll go into the, the first uh, site here. This is the only city-owned site, or the site that's owned outright by, by the city. This is the, the Dogwood Parking Lot, as you know, right downtown, um, between Fifth and, and Fourth Avenue. The site currently is being, uh, is currently serves as reserved parking for folks who work, who work downtown. And just to go back to how we think about this project, this is a, a program that assumes fifty-seven units, ninety-five parking spaces, the unit, units are in one three-story building. Uh, the cost of this project would be about fifteen and a half million dollars. And the financial gap for a project like this would be minimal, assuming that the city conveys the land at zero cost as part of the project. Now, right, this is just a minimum development that's possible on the site. I know there's of course, other ideas for ways of incorporating retail or other uses or mixed income on the site. So this is just to give you a sense of what's kind of minimally feasible. But all those questions about other development scenarios for the site could be explored and, and will be explored in, in a phase two. So this is just to give you a sense of one, one iteration of what's possible. But if you are interested in kind of learning more about how different development scenarios could compare to one another, all of those things could be explored in, in a phase two. This is really just to get a sense of, of what's possible right now and ask you all if you want to learn more. And that would be part, part of our phase two scope. The opportunities for the site, right, is owned, owned by the city, competitive, competitive for those tax credit projects, walkable to many of the um, activities downtown and, and jobs. One of the things that came up for this site in particular is that it's relatively small. So it's just under two acres. And so if uh, you were interested in seeing more density or more units added to, to this project under, under the tax credit program, you might have to look into building a, a parking deck to support those, support those units. That would likely increase the, the financial gap for, for this project. This is just a summary slide of the, how the Dogwood Lot compares with two other privately-owned sites that, that we identified. That I could revisit um, in, in closed session. But our approach for each of these uh, sites was the same. What is the kind of minimal uh, development feasibility that we could see for each of these? I'll touch briefly about the single-family opportunity that we identified. We know that uh, Community Land Trust is one affordable housing tool that um, the city has been exploring uh, for a while. And we want to use this process to identify sites that could support a portfolio of, of units that are permanently affordable for, for low-income households. The way that we think about affordable homeownership is, is gonna be different from rental. So for the rental projects, I was talking about the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit and uh, and kind of the, the requirements of, of that program. That program is really only for, for rental projects. And affordable homeownership is gonna have a different approach. Projects that uh, serve, that, that serve affordable homeownership opportunities use two different methods. One is to increase the purchasing power of homeowners. So things like down payment assistance, credit repair, low-interest loans. All those things kind of increase the amount of home a low-income homeowner or a low-income homebuyer could, could afford. You pair that method with method two, which is to help lower the cost of construction. So things like sweat equity, nonprofit agreements with construction suppliers and local government investment in infrastructure, all those things help bring down the cost of building, building new units. For the site we identified, um, there are many ways that we can explore um, a develop, uh, an affordable homeownership development for, for that site, but this is just, just one example. On a site that's about an acre and a half, you could fit eighteen units that are affordable to fifty percent of the area median income. With these kind of assumptions, uh, the, the, a project like this would be around three and a half million dollars. But the financial gap for this would be larger because there isn't that source of funding like there is for the, for the rental projects. So I'll sit here on the opportunity sites, site summary slide that kind of compares these different options. Happy to go deeper into the Dogwood Lot if you want to sit on the conversation there. Or we can move to uh, talk about the privately-owned sites in, in closed session.
Anyone? Questions or comments at this point?
All right. When you were before us in December, you were gonna look at the possibility of not using the term low income. You went to rental, I see wasn't able to come up with a solution to that. As I stated before, when you say low income. Stereotypes. You may even have uh, law enforcement educators that will be um, in that category of purchasing those homes. I'm just saying from my past experience at a city council meeting, there was a lot of pushback because it immediately felt like it was gonna be Section A aware, just stereotype.
Yeah, thank you for, for bringing that up again. So one of the ways that, so the, the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program is just the, the name of, the name of the program um, that, that we, that we're referencing. Part of the reason why I want to be specific about low to moderate income households is because that is where the city has statutory authority to participate and provide subsidy for, for a project. So I, I'd be specific about that, that phrasing only because that is the, the, when a, when housing is provided to the lower, lower income households, that is when the city has authority to participate in those projects. But in, to your, to your concern, in our housing needs assessments materials, we were very um, intentional about defining who are these households at these income levels and talked about some of the jobs that you see um, that are, that are, that are making low income. So we talked about healthcare workers, folks who work, you know, in service industries downtown, the wide range of occupations that fall in this category. So I'm happy to follow up with information about how we described it there. In this setting, I'm, I'm being a little more intentional just because of what, where the authority is for local government. Yeah, of course.
Anything else? All right. At the end of our presentations, and we do need to go into a closed session.
Madam Mayor, I move that City Council enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1M5 to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes and to establish or to instruct the public body's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contracts for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, sales.
Is there any discretion? Those in favor of entering closed session for the reasons given, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. You guys have it, much in tears, and we are...